Good evening. I am calling the Monday, May 24th, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Tonight's Planning Commission Meeting will be held virtually by using Zoom and in person while following social distancing guidelines. As Chair, I will be leading the Planning Commission Meeting, and the public is welcome to participate when invited throughout the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person or join via online Zoom. If attendees experience audio problems, we suggest you leave the meeting and then rejoin. This has usually fixed the issue. Additional instructions on how to participate are posted online at www.burnsvillemn.gov in the public meeting calendar. As usual, tonight's meeting is available for viewing on BCTV and on the city's website. If you are unable to participate this evening and would like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to email your comments to city staff or mail your comments directly to City Hall. You may participate in the meeting tonight online by going to https://zoom.us/join and typing in meeting ID 99806378808. Once you're logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which item you wish to speak to. You may also call into the meeting at 651-372-8299. Meeting ID 99806378808. If you do wish to speak tonight, your call will be muted until that time. We do not have any public hearings this evening, but if you are participating with us tonight, please indicate that you wish to speak and I will allow that. Please note there may be a slight delay due to the differences in technology. If speaking by phone, please mute your computer since there may be feedback. All right, onto the agenda. The first item this evening is adoption of the agenda. Commissioners, staff, any changes to tonight's agenda?
No changes.
Commissioner Roberts?
I move to approve the agenda.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Roberts?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Henderson, thank you. We do not need a roll call tonight, so all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? All right, the motion carries, thank you. All right, next we will consider approval of our last meeting's minutes, which was on May 10th, 2021. Any changes from staff or commission?
None from staff.
All right, and a motion to approve. Commissioner John?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner John?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Wad. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And the motion carries. All right, on to our one agenda, or our main agenda item this evening, which is a multimodal and complete streets presentation by our city engineer Jen Desert, and I will let you have the floor, Jen, and just knock our socks off. We're excited to learn all about this.
Well, thank you so much for having me tonight. We have our two consultants there on Zoom. Heather Keenets and Colin Harris are going to be doing the bulk of the presentation. But just as a little introduction to what we're doing, we have had in our CIP a multimodal study to be conducted in 2021 for a few years now, and so we're finally getting around to doing it. And what's exciting about it is that we can look at our whole system, find gaps, find deficiencies, and then have the public be part of the process. And so we're starting with this commission will be at the PNRC. We had a council work session. I think Heather and Colin will go through that process a little bit. And then we also are really excited that we got a grant from Dakota County, so we were able to really make the study bigger, more complete than what we had initially budgeted. So it's a SHIP grant, which is statewide health improvement program grant, and so it's about active transportation. We added a lot into this scope for Heather and her team, so there's a lot to do with multimodal, different types of mobility options, complete streets, electric vehicle charging stations, a lot to cover tonight. We do, in your packet, had some discussion questions, so we're hoping to get a lot of feedback from you about how you'd like to see this study progress. So I'll turn it over to Heather and Colin, and just as a reminder, I'm going to forward when you say next slide.
Okay. Right now I do not see slide. Oh, thank you. Hello Chair, hello Commissioners. I'm Heather Keenets of SEH. Nice to meet you. Next slide, please. I'll kick it off. So for our agenda tonight, we're going to cover a few things. The front end of the presentation I want to go through a little bit quickly, but I want to make sure that you're understanding what we're doing here and make sure that you're grounded in what we're doing. And I really want to get to the questions. Colin and I want to make sure that we're hearing from you tonight and having a good discussion toward the end of the presentation. And during the presentation, I'll take some pauses too if there are questions, and Colin will take pauses as well if you have questions of us. These are the main topics we're going to cover, and we'll kick it off right now. Next. So as Jen mentioned, this multimodal study is funded both by Dakota County's SHIP grant as well as the capital improvement funds from the city. And the intent of this is to really provide that safer, more inclusive transportation system for all users in the city of Burnsville. And one of the outcomes is going to be to provide implementation strategies to improve walking and biking networks across the city. And as part of our process, we need to provide a really robust community engagement process so that we can help engage that community to help us identify those opportunities and priorities. And specifically, as part of the goals of this study, we need to engage with SHIP populations. Those include seniors, youth, people of color, people with low incomes, and other people who might be experiencing health disparities. And lastly, the multimodal and complete street study outcomes need to support health, livability, and economic development for the whole Burnsville community. Next. So complete streets, what are complete streets? To really put it most simply, they prioritize safety, comfort, and access to destinations for everybody using the street. People driving, people walking, people rolling, people biking, people taking transit. And most important, or and importantly too, they serve folks whose needs may not have been met previously by the traditional approach to transportation planning and designing of our streets. Next. And earlier I had mentioned a couple slides ago, livability. So livability is something that we think about a lot and hear a lot, mentioned a lot. It's also mentioned a dozen or so times in the city's comprehensive plan, and it's also named in one of the city's, the city council's strategic vision, values, and priorities. Livability is really of the variety of factors that contribute to a community's quality of life. So in our context for this plan, it's about the built environment and how that relates to all these other factors listed here in the definition on the screen. Next. So one of our big deliverables as part of this process is going to be the multimodal plan. It's going to be a blueprint for future investments for the city to develop a multimodal transportation network. The outcome is going to be action-oriented recommendations that are rooted in data-driven analysis that we create here. And in addition to those trails, sidewalks, bicycle lanes, and connections to transit, we also need to identify opportunities for new and shared mobility investments, things like scooter share, bike share. Jen mentioned earlier EV charging stations, things like car share, our car, those types of things. Next. The complete streets policy itself is going to demonstrate your community's commitment to support safe travel by any mode for all people of all ages and all abilities. So that policy will call for a multimodal balance to all your transportation projects. And it will include active transportation design guidelines that we use both local and national best practices. And we also need to really ensure that those are also in alignment with the city's current goals and policies. And all of these tools will combine together to help the city develop consistency during their planning, design, and implementation processes. Next. So here's our project schedule. You can see at the top here, we're at the end of May, and we're at our Planning Commission Meeting. In blue, you can see all of our project management elements. The first meeting with city elected officials is the blue one with Planning Commission. Next, we meet with the Department of, or the Natural Resources Commission, and then we meet with the city council, or we do a city council workshop. And in green, you can see that we just completed our first key deliverable. You have that tech memo in front of you, or you receive that as part of your packet. That's that existing transportation conditions. And we just began doing our multimodal needs assessment, which is the next element of our technical deliverables. We're going to be gathering that public input, which you can see in that orange, that orange row in the middle throughout the summer. And then when we get to the end of the summer, we're going to be working on taking all that input that we've gained and taking that information from the needs assessment and compiling that into the multimodal plan and the policy and working toward council adoption in September. And as you can see in the top blue line, we have some project management team meetings. We have a project management team that's made up of people from Dakota County, people from city staff, and people from MVTA. So all of those folks are on our project management team and hear updates on our project regularly. Next. So for our community engagement plan, we've kicked off that work with some initial communications last month. We provided some information, just really high level for that city dashboard, so that we could give people a little bit of a teaser, let them know what we're doing. There's a brief summary on our website and provide some contact info and a list serve for people to sign up and get them excited about it. And this week, we're actually launching our full website with both public survey and Wikimap. And that's going to, the Wikimap provides people with an option for location-based comments, so they can go into a map and add comments at a specific location as to what their experience might be at that location. Perhaps they think they need a trail connection there, perhaps they have trouble crossing there. However, they function across the community, they can add comments there. The Wikimap option does also provide an option for them to provide their email so that they can receive additional communications going forward. And then we're advertising the website and survey on social media, Snapchat and Twitter, as well as Facebook. And then we also have a project flyer. We also show on this slide in the blue some photo booth cutouts. Those are going to be sort of life-size, and they're going to have the face cut out so that people can engage with them and do some photos and post those with hashtags and hopefully some social media. And those will be at in-person events. Our first one will be the June 12th Back to the 80s Car Show. And hopefully moved around the city, working with Amber through communications staff at the city to places like new playground openings or Party on the Plaza and sort of that block party atmosphere so that people can engage. And then on the off times, probably be placed at City Hall. And next slide. And then one of the focuses based on the idea of this grant itself is engaging with those SHIP populations. So we're very concerned about having equitable engagement. So we have our flyer being distributed in three languages, English, Somali, and Spanish. And we're going to make sure that it's distributed to affordable housing locations, cultural and religious centers, and locations that we've already identified in our engagement plan that are either owned by Black, Indigenous, and people of color, or frequented by people in that group. And then we are also meeting with that stakeholder advisory committee that I mentioned during our schedule. And that is made up of a variety of people, including representation for people that are seniors, people with disabilities, youth, and businesses. And we're still looking to expand that a little bit if we can. So we're still trying to get a couple more representatives, but we do have a pretty full group right now, and we're pretty excited about that. And that meeting kicks off on Friday. Next. So you saw the memo for the existing transportation conditions. I'm going to do a really high-level summary. I've got five slides on it. I don't necessarily need to get into the weeds, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you have on it. But I'll walk through a few of them, and I'll pause a couple minutes for questions. But if anybody has questions on anything I've mentioned so far, I can take a breath and pause for you now if there are any things.
Commissioners? I think we can keep moving forward?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, sure. Thanks. So for the existing transportation conditions, these are the few pieces I'm going to go through. I'll just go to the next slide and start with the first one. Bicycle and pedestrian activity. Our orange map on the left-hand side shows the pedestrian activity, and it's, both maps are really functioning as heat maps. The purple map is showing the bicycle activity in Burnsville. This is, the darker the color, the more activity that we were seeing. This is data obtained from actual cellphone data that's anonymized. And it's not capturing obviously 100% of cellphone data, but it's capturing some cellphone data, so it's a relative amount of activity. So it gives you a sense of where the hotspots are in the community as far as where existing activity is. And one thing that we really want to be clear on when we're doing a plan like this is this is existing activity, but it doesn't really get at that latent demand or where people might want to be or may want to bike or might want to walk, but it does get at where they are right now. So that's something very interesting to at least give us a start point of information as to where that activity is happening now. Colin will share with you a little bit more information as we travel, or as we get through the presentation as to how to get at that where people might want to be traveling. Next. This slide, it looks a little bit blurry in this picture. I'm not sure. Maybe it'll come up a little clearer for you guys in there. But this is the multimodal transportation network as we start. So this is our start point. It's what we got from the city and the county's data and tells us what the existing network is and what is currently proposed. So all the dashed lines represent that proposed network as of right now, and the solid is existing. And then the yellow highlights represent what the Metropolitan Council calls their regional bicycle transportation network corridor. And that is a place where Met Council identifies throughout the seven-county metro area where, what sort of corridor would be important to people biking in a regional sense. So there's not a specific alignment of a route necessarily identified by Met Council yet, but that is, that is the corridor generally where they would identify potential routing. So this is our start point, and we intend to build on this. Next. One of the things that we wanted to have an understanding of when we took this project on was safety. By bicyclists and pedestrians are among the most vulnerable users of our roadways. So we wanted to understand what current safety conditions were for bicyclists and pedestrians. If any of you have biked or walked, you might know that sometimes those kinds of near misses or almost crashes obviously aren't reported in crash data. So we're not capturing again everything, but what we do capture in this is at least a sense of understanding what's going on out there for safety that is reported. So this map shows our snapshot summary of the last five years of data for bicyclists and pedestrian crashes in the city of Burnsville. We found there were 62 crashes for bikes and pedestrians, four fatal crashes, which were all pedestrians. And what you can see in those two red circles are places where we saw concentration of crashes occurring for bicyclists and pedestrians. Two of the fatal crashes occurred at Chunk Highway 13 in Washburn, and those were pedestrian crashes. And then, of course, in the Burnsville Center area, there's greater activity and more crashes occurring. So those are areas that we're going to want to make sure that we're providing more comfortable, safer facilities for people walking and biking as we think about our planning process. Next. When we think about biking and walking and multimodal transportation, we have to understand what's happening for motor vehicles and understand what opportunities there might be. So looking at these two maps, on the left, we have a heat map that shows the volume for, volume for motor vehicles, the daily volume. The darker the red color, the higher the volume, the lighter, the lower the volume. And then, of course, we have the numbers as well for this in the report, but it just gives you a quick snapshot of which roadways in Burnsville have those higher volumes. And then at the right map, we also want to know what we're, what we have for travel lanes. When we think about walking and biking, the more travel lanes that you cross as a pedestrian or cross as a bicyclist, the less comfortable you are. So understanding what people will be encountering as far as routes go when we're making crossings is important. So having this information is important to our planning process. Next. Transit is important, in particular because we want to make sure that our plan addresses those last mile connections so that people can access transit. Transit users are important to this planning process and to the plan, so we want to make sure that we understand what's existing and proposed. And that is all summarized here in this exhibit. We, as I mentioned, have MVTA on our PMT and have the future plans for Orange Line in here as well. So we want to make sure when we think about things like last mile connections, new mobility, shared mobility, EV charging stations, all of those things that we're thinking about how people might better access transit. Next. Colin, are you ready to take over?
Sure. Thanks, Heather. Good evening, everyone. Colin Harris, engineer with Alta Planning and Design. For tonight's discussion, we wanted to have a couple maps for existing and proposed land use. This is on the screen right now. Existing land use, and of course, the single-family detached land use across the city and other modes throughout, or land uses throughout. On the next slide, we have the 2040 planned land use. A couple areas to point out, which everyone is probably familiar with, the redevelopment areas heart of the city, as well as Burnsville Center Village. And we can see how proxent these areas are to where people live. And I think one thing we want to talk about with you tonight is the potential for increasing multimodal trips in Burnsville. Knowing Burnsville is only about four or five miles wide, that proximity to different types of land uses is a real asset for Burnsville. Next slide. We have one more land use map here showing specifically residential land use, and overlaid on here is new and proposed and existing housing, including market rate and affordable housing locations. So we'll have these available. If you want to flip back to these perhaps during discussion. On the next slide, we wanted to point out a couple ideas that we're starting to think about. Heather mentioned we're getting into the multimodal needs assessment. And we know throughout Burnsville, we have lots of trails, we have lots of sidewalks, and the regional trails in particular facilitate longer distance travel to destinations regionally, as well as within Burnsville. The focus of the local trail network is improving connectivity between these different neighborhoods, to parks, to schools, libraries, main streets, commercial nodes. Even short segments of trails can really make a real big impact on overall network connectivity. So we'll use the word network when we're talking about multimodal connections quite a bit. What's the network for walking and biking? And how can we build upon what's already there? So on the screen is an example. Typically, when we might have some single-family housing, it might be a long route, for example, even though geographically your home might be close to your school. Based on the existing roads, you might have to travel out of your way on the left. There's, there might be an opportunity to think about some of these short trails or neighborhood access ways to really unlock or kind of expand the network of low-stress facilities for walking and biking. So as we start to think about this, we're thinking about the regional networks, but we're also thinking about these local trail networks that really serve a transportation purpose in addition to providing recreational activities. So they should hopefully complement the growing network of on-street facilities. Say, for example, we have bike lanes in Burnsville. How do we expand that and have a larger connection, larger connections and more network connections across the city? One more example on the next couple slides here. This is an example, you know, thinking of where Aldi grocery store is, for example, and someone's home, for example. And the circle on the screen is what we might consider a typical walk shed. In other words, if you're in a location at Aldi, for example, what's, what's a distance that one might be able to travel by foot? And typically, we think, well, maybe a one-mile radius is appropriate for walking. On the next slide, we start to think about how do we, how we might get from home to Aldi. So we put on the local sidewalks and trails. And we see there's facilities available along major roadways, including County Road 5, McAndrews Road, which is also County Road 38. On the next slide, we start to think about, great, well, how do we get from those network locations to Aldi, for example? So when we consider the crossings, for example, to reach, the example here, we can see that it's not really possible to reach Aldi without having to go through a crossing, a stressful crossing. And there, you know, thinking about these crossings, we have unsignaled crossings and signalized crossings. And in this location, even a signalized crossings might be really high stress for someone, especially if it's a parent with a four-year-old or someone in a wheelchair. Thinking about that signalized crossing that's pointed out there, you're still crossing four or five lanes of traffic, and there's turning vehicles. And the red dots are pointing out the unsignaled crossings, and those are stressful for a few reasons. Traffic's going at 40 miles per hour, there's four or five lanes of traffic, there's no marked crosswalks. And thinking about those different turning movements would be typically uncomfortable, again, for a family. Thinking about a family or someone who might be in a wheelchair. So in other words, you know, thinking about how do we expand the network connection through sidewalks and trails, but also paying pretty close consideration to the crossings as well as that kind of the final step for lots of people from getting to their origin to their destination. I'll pause there and see if there's any questions. And then Heather, I think you're going to talk about the needs assessment next.
You can go ahead, Colin, if you want, or I can't?
Sure, yeah. So on the next slide here, we already got it up. So the needs assessment, Heather started to talk about this. This is where we're at right now. We're thinking about those pedestrian and bicycle origins and destinations where people might live and where they might be wanting to go. And starting to think about strategies to, you know, integrate some of these complete streets and active transportation facilities into the public right of way. We want to look at some of the gaps in the system. We know we're starting from a point that's, that's very good. There's lots of sidewalks and trails. How do we identify now, what are those critical gaps, and start to think about prioritizing? As Heather mentioned, through public engagement and through other data gathering, we're really examining that, those demographic equity indicators to identify the priority locations to improve active transportation and transit. And then these, and thinking, you know, how do we highlight and prioritize transit-dependent populations? And finally, too, thinking about new mobility. It's a, it's a new topic. It's emerging. You know, we've heard of Nice Ride and other bike share, you know, Bird, Lyft, these types of things. How do we get ready for the next step here and start to identify what those trends are and be ready to integrate shared and micro mobility into Burnsville? Next slide. All right. So this is where I think we'll kind of take a bigger pause and start to open it up to questions and answers. And I believe Jen mentioned these Q and A questions are in the packet. So these generally match what was already in the materials. So with this first one, I think we can probably just dive in unless there's any questions on the presentation content.
No, let's go ahead. Do you wanna facilitate?
Yes, we can facilitate, yeah. So this first question, what types of ordinances and city policies do you see as generally being beneficial to support this project? You're thinking about multimodal and complete streets. And these three are just purely examples to get the conversation started. Thinking about, is it important to you? Thinking about sidewalks, sidewalk widths, for example, within a central business district. Thinking about new developments, is it important to think about the number of electric vehicle stalls as being part of a policy? And thinking about multimodal, too, and the emergence of electric assist bikes as well, your number of bike stalls and how that might relate to a size of a development.
Here, Robert. Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah, this is, I guess, I've, just going back to the very beginning, this is a simple question. In regards to the amount of room needed to add pedestrian sidewalks, electric bike ways, things like that, that's gonna help out in all of this. Logistically, do we have the room in Burnsville to widen our streets or do this type of thing? I mean, we do have some sidewalks, but we don't have sidewalks everywhere already. And I'm just curious, as we start making these trails and shortcuts and all this type of stuff through lawns, do we have the room?
I can take that question. So in some places, we do. A typical right-of-way width for your street has, you know, maybe twelve to fifteen feet behind the curb on each side. In some places, we might need to require easements in order to do some, maybe a cut-through. And someone may not be willing, and so then we have to move on. So we wouldn't be, I don't imagine our council being, wanting to do, use eminent domain or condemnation to do things like that through a neighborhood. But in some where there might be a big gap that's regional significance, where we might need maybe a little bit of width in the roadway, then we could probably do that. One example of that is Cliff Road. We're building a trail starting this summer, and we needed to acquire property from sixteen properties, property owners, in order to widen, to accommodate the trail. So in some places, we'll have it, in some places, we won't. The overall network, when we're thinking about this from a system, you know, we'll probably go for low-hanging fruit first. And then, if there's complicated things, we may never get some of it built if it's not feasible. But we're really trying to come up with a system that would be providing some of these things that Colin and Heather had talked about throughout the city.
Commissioner Wad?
This is a specific question, sidewalk widths. Is that so that the sidewalk can accommodate bicycle traffic as well as pedestrian traffic? That's my question.
No, I think, good, thank you for the question. I think for a central business district in particular, and we're thinking about multimodal, we're thinking about prioritizing walking first. And then, with lots of activity, especially with businesses and people coming in and out of vehicles, having enough space for people to walk comfortably, maybe two by two, have enough room for wheelchairs to pass, and also have activity for other things that we know happen in sidewalks, you know, like street cafes, parking for scooters and potentially bike share, these types of things. But I think ideally, especially for a CBD, how do we separate space? There's space for walking, there's space for other modes that are separate from the sidewalk.
Thank you.
So our current sidewalk width, or just in general, is five feet. And that's when we're building new sidewalks, we're building them five feet wide. I think the question is, is that wide enough, in your opinion? In certain areas, would you expect it to be wider? Is that something we should be looking at?
Yeah. Yeah, if they're not driving bikes and scooters on the street, they're on the sidewalk. And, I mean, obviously pedestrians have right-of-way, but safety's a concern, you know? So all of a sudden, you're crowding the runway with a bunch of electric bikes and then all of a sudden pedestrians might be a little skittish, I don't know. But is five feet enough? I don't know.
I think the more the people, the more people, the more width you need.
Yeah.
The more activity. And if it's, if there's a restaurant and you're gonna have a sidewalk cafe, it probably, probably needs to be twenty feet or, you know, quite a bit larger to accommodate, accommodate it.
I've seen sidewalks that have, that the dotted lines down the middle because you've got traffic on both ways as well. I'm assuming that would be the ten-foot wide sidewalks you talk about in the packet, so, yeah.
So a five-foot sidewalk, that's like the blacktopped ones along County Road Forty-two? Or sidewalks?
Sidewalks are concrete. Typically, we think of sidewalk as concrete. And then a trail would be the blacktop, bituminous, which is gonna be ten feet, usually minimum. There's some that are eight, some that are twelve. And then those are multi-use, so intended for bikes and pets. Sidewalks generally intended just for pets, but they're not prohibited. So bikes could be on the sidewalk. Particularly, that's one of the reasons why we started incorporating some on-street bike lanes to try and separate that in some locations. But certain people are not gonna use the on-street bike lane. If you're a kid, or you're a family, or you've got one of those little buggies, you might not feel comfortable. So they're, having more than one option. If you are in one of those electric bike assist and you can go twenty miles per hour, you should in no way be on a sidewalk. So, and that, and that might require the city to create some regulations around that, which I don't believe we have right now.
Right. I think that's kind of the important thing for me is signage and, you know, what's the proper way to use it? I mean, my personal opinion is that if there's a trail, bicycles should not be on the main road. But that's not the case, and I don't know how you encourage users to use the appropriate surface. I mean, if you have a ten-foot or even wider trail along County Road Forty-two, how do you get bikes off of County Road Forty-two? Or other areas?
I think he hits it on the head. Unique signing is gonna be needed because communication is gonna be key and confusion is gonna cause problems. So for us to right out of the chute, make sure everybody knows what can take place on this portion of sidewalk path, whatever, will be simpler. Yeah.
As far as bike lanes, I was driving around a little bit and going down Lake Locklavan is one of the few places we have identified bike lanes. And I noticed that there's still, on both sides, it starts on one side, then it goes to the other, there's like a parking area along the side of the bike lane. Is that needed? Or could the, could we always make them, I don't even know what it's called, the median? Or the size bike lane?
Oh, yeah. Well, in those areas, especially on Locklavan, that on-street parking is needed just for the parking lots overflow and people do use the on-street parking. So we did design it to accommodate on-street parking, but I think on curves, we made some changes about when it is parking on, parking off. Yeah. So in that location, it is needed. And we have another bike, on-street bike lane on Traveler's Trail, same situation. We had to make some adjustments for parking, but it is used, on-street parking is used. So we wanted to not limit that.
What about this road out here, Civic Center Way? We have...
A wide shoulder.
Wide shoulder, there we go. Thank you, shoulder. So would that be, could we put little bike lane people in there and make that the bike lane? Or is that?
We could. And I think right now, it is kind of a shared, I think parking is allowed. And we don't see a lot of parking on there right now, unless there's some event, in which case, then we would have to have something with their shared. But we could, we could, we could delineate that. And I think it was in our, in our plan that it's an option to delineate and add the markings.
I think the challenge, and we've kind of seen this with a lot of the things we look at, is, is there, you know, a need for an ordinance versus is there a need for communication, signage, things like that? Because as soon as you have an ordinance, then the question is, is it going to be enforced? Who's going to enforce it? What's the penalty for, you know, not abiding by that ordinance? And I don't know that, you know, in the friendly world of biking and walking, that, you know, anybody wants to have to worry about that. So I think the communication, the signage is very important. I mean, as far as ordinances, maybe you're looking more for, do we wanna require fourteen feet in this part of the city? Or twenty feet in this part of the city? I mean, in that case, I think, you know, there's, there's logical, you know, answers to that in certain areas where they're currently using a shoulder for parking and biking. You know, maybe then, in that same area, you only have a sidewalk. Or when there already is an existing trail in that area, maybe you don't have a shoulder. I mean, it seems that, you know...
That's where these guys come in.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going.
I like that you got all the, the thought is going through your head because that's what you're for.
Yeah.
But that's what these guys are gonna figure out.
It's kind of like, I mean...
So what I'm hearing is, we don't need an ordinance because we're gonna be doing context design in those areas. And that would be on the city to do that design.
Yeah, that's, that's my feeling for...
A little more friendly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that probably blends a bit with our street design guidelines. The design guidelines that are part of our process is, and so that, you know, we'll come up with some of that. And it might be based on place to an extent. A place like Heart of the City would have different design guidelines than a different location in the city that doesn't have that type of development. Would there be any interest in any types of ordinance related to provisions by new developments for multimodal facilities? That last two bullets on the question, I know we probably need to move on, but I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Commissioner Wad?
So one of the, one of the bullets was about EV charging stations and new developments. And this is maybe more of a technical question, but is there a way to provide for scaling up of those as they're needed? It seems like there are some EV charging stations around. I noticed a couple at Buck Hill when I was there a couple of weeks ago. I never see a car at them, you know? And so I don't know how often they get, are being used now? And so is there a way to get the infrastructure there that, so that if we need to add them, we can put them in, rather than mandating your apartment building needs four EV charging stations? Or six, or whatever it is?
I think then we're talking more about public infrastructure because once the development is in, we can't really go back and ask them to do more later. So once they're in, yeah, we're kind of stuck. But we do have five EV charging stations that are publicly owned in the heart of the city. And I think we're gonna get to that question about that in a minute. And I can, if you're interested, we, since we manage them, we know their usage. And so if you're interested in knowing how often they're used, I could run a report and send it through Sarah and others to see, you know, what we're currently seeing for usage. That's of interest.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, my concern is, are we putting, are we making people do things that aren't gonna get used very much? Or is there a way to make people, you know, provide some of that infrastructure that can be scaled up if, you know, as electrical, electric vehicle charging becomes higher demand?
And that could be market-driven, too, because as it becomes higher demand, those developments might want to.
Right. And I think a lot of apartment buildings do it now because it's kind of a, you know, it's kind of an amenity or feature. And again, I, I don't know how often any of that stuff gets used, so...
One other question was about bike, bike parking. So I think we do require bike parking, but we don't have numbers. Is that right?
We require it in transit-oriented development districts, and there's, there is a calculation.
Okay.
I don't know it off the top of my head, but there is, there is, it's part of a formula.
So only in Heart of the City and then Burnsville Center Village eventually?
Yeah, right now, currently, only Heart of the City. There's a plan to expand transit-oriented development zoning. And at that point, we would probably look at it again and how it would be applied to other areas like the Burnsville Center.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Wad that the market will really drive electric vehicle parking in private development. So I don't necessarily know that, I feel like it's premature to make any requirements for that. But I do think, you know, the city's had the foresight to start doing it on public projects. And as we start seeing the orange line more in parking areas, I think where you're gonna want it the most is in, you know, parking structures where people are commuting from, where they're leaving their car for a long period of time. And I frankly would like to defer to Commissioner John because he drives an electric vehicle. So, I mean, most people, it seems, in Burnsville are going to charge at their home.
Right.
There are a lot of commuters that park here and take transit to Minneapolis or St. Paul. But I guess, what is, what do you see as a good place for it and a good balance?
A great place for it would be the Center Village, is a Tesla station, is what I'm thinking. Because that becomes a draw for people to come in. And mainly right now, Tesla stations are set up, they're supercharging stations. And of course, as other companies are getting more and more in electrical vehicles, it's gonna be more and more the commonplace. But they're set up so that you can go from one station to the next on a certain charge. We're in a very ideal location, being right where thirty-five E and thirty-five W come together. The Center Village being one of the places that we wanna draw people in, having something right there. Because while your car is charging, you need something to do. And so it would be a perfect spot for it. It might be that push to bring in the, bring in the community or bring in economic...
Is there a standard charging port in electric vehicles? Or does Tesla kind of own the market? And when Ford starts creating their, you know, electric F-150, are you gonna be able to plug it in at a Tesla station?
There's a standard one and there's the Tesla one. But there are adapters to each of those. So there's no adapter from the Tesla's charger to a regular car. But for us Tesla owners, we're fine.
Do you want us to move on?
Yeah. Let's have your own Tesla conversation, maybe.
Well, I think, I think the point that he hit is very good. That would be a good place and maybe a good thing for the city to look at to incentivize some type of private entity to come into the Center Village or into the heart of the city for that matter.
But I think what Sarah was getting at wasn't the pathways or having routes through the city, like he was talking about how we're a bunch of cul-de-sacs built on each other and going through thoroughfares, which I think would be huge for our city where we don't have very well... We don't have great direct access from one place to the other. I think that was the point Colin was making. And of course, I think that would be very beneficial if we can do it.
Colin, how many questions are on your Q and A so we can kind of have an idea?
There are eight.
Okay.
One more.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts. Let's move on.
Sounds good. We're already touching on some of them, so I think we'll all kind of come together here. But specifically here, we also wanted to ask about your perspective on how and where to incorporate new and shared mobility such as scooters, bicycles, you know, and cars as well. And we understand that the city has been approached by Bird scooters to assess the opportunity for Burnsville for scooter share in the past. And, you know, and just acknowledging, it's been so much evolution in this over the past three, five years. You know, these new mobility options are really changing the way people move about their community. So I'll pause there.
Is everyone familiar with these options? Bird and Lime, I think both are in Minneapolis, our car is in Minneapolis. And then Ride, I think Nice Ride is in Minneapolis and St. Paul. So it's more of an urban thing right now. But Bird did reach out and say, you know, express some interest, but not, but then kind of pulled back. And so right now, our ordinances are not written to allow Bird scooters to be here. And I, this question is really getting at, is that of interest to Burnsville? Do you think we should try and accommodate that?
I think it would be great, you know, just to have more options. I think that's, kind of the grand scheme of things, to have more options for moving around is great. And these are all great options. The challenge, I think, with the scooters and the bikes, you know, in the city of Minneapolis, every, there's public sidewalks on every street. And so you can take, pick up a bike and ride it and leave it at your destination, and it can sit there for three days. And in Burnsville, especially if we get into the single-family residential areas, you know, where our density is much lower, we don't have public sidewalks. What happens to that bike? You just leave it in your front yard until someone else comes and picks it up? Or I think that is probably more of a business challenge for them to make it work in our type of...
We're in the suburbs, we're not in the, I mean, there's people in the cities that don't even own cars. You know, and they're pedestrian, everything. So they do use that in the suburbs. It'd be a challenge to try to tell people, start using a scooter, and then where do you leave it? Because you can't leave it everywhere.
I think it'd be great, but I don't know that that, I don't know that it works for them, you know?
Right.
It would be a great option to have.
So is the current ordinance, is the issue that they can't be left somewhere? Or is it that we can't have motorized? Or is it that we can't have motorized equipment on our trails or sidewalks?
I'd have to look into that. Someone else in my staff was kind of researching it. Uh, one of the issues I think currently that Minneapolis faces is the drop off. You know, the scooters and just, they're there, just on the corner. And, and to your point, it could be just at someone's house or, or whatever, but, um, the clutter of scooters and bikes being left around is, has been a concern, I think, and, and it could be a bigger concern in the suburbs with the limited areas that it would be in, so like heart of the city, Burnsville Center Village and that area. Yeah, so I mean, we, it's something that we're exploring and it's good to hear your thoughts on, on what you think of Burnsville as being part of that, or maybe it's too soon, and I think we can, we can see if we wanna move forward or not.
We can't drive three blocks without being in a residential area. Here, whereas in the city, you have a full radius of nothing but a gridlock of streets, you know, that you can zip in around downtown and all that stuff.
Streets and, and sidewalks, so you take the bike to the, your destination and you go to your right, your.
As much as it sounds great, I'm not sure, yeah.
I'm, I'm curious on insurance liability on, on that sort of a thing, is the city, would the city be running it? Would be, or would this bird?
It's a private, private business.
I do know that they, I mean, they have to charge, so the companies will gather them up. Their GPS tracked and so at night they'll gather them up, so they won't sit for, you know, weeks on end in front of somebody's house. But I'm also thinking that because of that GPS, they can be shut down if they leave a certain area. So maybe if we just limit it to the Center Village area and the heart of the city area and then required, you know, that the GPS shuts down the vehicle, um, if they. Nobody's gonna use it, cause you wanna, you wanna ride the scooter, you know, from the center of the city, home or to your friend's house and.
It's true.
Up all those big hills, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're not flat.
I think that the dockable bikes is probably more compatible with it here. So the Nice Ride bikes have to be docked, otherwise you continue to pay for them. So, um, I think that that's probably a more compatible business that, or something similar. And most metro areas across the country and college towns, not that, when we were, we're not either of those. But would have that type of service and that's probably more compatible.
That's true.
They host in the right way, so we've, we can help with site selection of the docks, so.
All right. We move to the next one? We kind of already covered this a little, the EV charging stations, does anyone have anything else they wanna add? Okay.
This one we started talking about too, but we'd love a little more conversation, you know, thinking about the image that we showed earlier. Um, but thinking about those short trails, those direct connections that might not necessarily be along existing streets but could vastly improve access for all people and, uh, to destinations. What are some considerations from your perspective, um, for where those might be in the future?
I think you hit it on the head with connection through public land. That, you talk about your low hanging fruit, being able to do those right away. And seeing those develop and then have people use them, get excited about them. And then we start trying to get into areas that are a little more difficult to, you know, to make, I guess for lack of words, to develop. But I think people would enjoy that immensely to have a shortcut, for lack of words, to do stuff, rather than having to go the route that they normally take.
Well, just even going to school.
Yeah, even to go to school, if there's a shorter, a safer way, then yeah, that's a bonus.
Yeah, the diagram is great.
Yeah, I think it, it drives up, uh, pedestrian traffic rather than using your cars.
I think it helps to have that destination too of the school, you know. Paths to the school makes especially, you know, elementary, um, um, elementary or middle school, that makes a lot of sense. Yeah, I think school's a great starting point, um. Getting people to the businesses, I mean, I feel like for safety purposes, that should be secondary to kids and families trying to access schools and parks, um.
And this is more of an infrastructure question that you might be hitting on later, but this board is always talking about safety. That's one of our key concerns that we're on this panel. Um, are these type of new developed trails and all this stuff, are they all lit? Lit up at nighttime, that's what I'm getting at? I mean, safety wise, we're, we're not talking about a dark trail that's going through whatever now, these are all gonna have lighting or not?
I mean, I don't think that's been determined. If it's a longer roadway, then typically, yeah, it would have street lights that are already there. But if that's a consideration that you'd want to include in the plan, that they all be lit. I think that's one of the issues with, I think, some of the accidents. Heather, if you can correct me wrong, was that there wasn't enough lighting or there was some issues with lighting, is that right?
Yeah, oftentimes the lighting, especially crossing the street is, is not well lit. It's more lit for vehicles than that pedestrian crossing or than the pedestrian where they're standing on the sidewalk. So, um, having that lighting is important. And then I think you might have heard both Colin and I refer to safety and comfort. So, um, you're getting at the point of comfort, right? You're not comfortable walking in maybe the winter or in a fall, in the morning on a dark path. Um, you might be safe from traffic, but you might not feel comfortable. So, you know, having some parameters, if that's what you're getting at, is, is probably something to consider. Um, it, it's part of that, part of the pieces of the puzzle, right?
I think going through parks, lighting will be important. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of great trails in Minneapolis that cut through parks and I wouldn't, you know, go on them at nighttime. But if they were nicely lit and utilized, I'd feel much more comfortable, as you said.
Yeah, and this will all help us with some of those design standards, so if you're saying that lighting is, we want that to be a design standard, taking notes of that.
Yeah, if that's under the safety umbrella that we're talking about, then great.
Anything else on this one?
If a list started here of types of destinations in Burnsville. Interested in your thoughts on what might be missing and added to this list. Um, and then even from there, you know, what would you prioritize in terms of, um, destinations?
Top golf, right bud? Top golf, right?
Yeah, once that goes in, hopefully.
All right, but are there major recreational types of facilities where you do have big draws? You know, that I, even if they are, uh, commercial, they might be good to note? I know I spent many ti- many birthday parties up at the, uh, what's the gaming place?
Grand Slam.
Grand Slam.
Grand Slam, yes. Oh, that was a, that was a destination for a good three, four years.
You know what's interesting about that whole area, including the school, is crossing over Highway thirteen. Some kind of, uh, walking bridge across there would be ideal, I think. However, that's, you know, cost.
I was gonna add to the list, you know, any high density, higher density housing area, you know, apartment buildings. Especially the older apartment complexes that we have in Burnsville, where we have a lot of density. We have a lot of people that really could benefit from access to the trails. It's not on there, right? It's, I see neighborhoods. But I would say, you know, it seems like that would be low hanging fruit and that there's a lot of people who could benefit from from their apartment building being a destination.
From the previous conversation, I was hearing schools as a priority, is that something that? Any other priorities on this list or that we haven't listed?
We have, um, medical facilities, your Park Nicklet and Fairview areas.
Certainly add that, I've got that and, and that serves as an employment center as well.
Oh, sure.
But that's a very specific employment center and, and has many visitors, so it makes sense.
I think for specific neighborhoods, the, the neighborhood, I guess it's a little bit north of Buck Hill. And there's a lot of older apartment buildings there, um, like Commissioner Wad was saying, so that they've been there a long time. And they're actually very dense compared to what was maybe built in between those and like the current, um, applications that we're seeing.
I would say I would just offer places maybe with affordable housing. Um, when we think about people who are less inclined to own cars and more transit dependent and dependent on, um, other forms of transportation. It tends to be people, um, in lower income brackets.
Well, maybe that's something to look at for the project. I mean, look for areas in the city where average rent costs are you know, maybe an outlier or just less than other areas and kind of start in some of those areas. If you're looking at, um, apartments or townhomes.
Sure.
Do you think we're gonna get a request from the neighborhood, as in la, city of Burnsville? That we start implementing access to religious facilities?
We start providing more like.
More walking and more whatever, other than cars. You know, I mean, do you open up Pandora's box with every single thing that's out there? Or do you just stay away from that and say, okay, that's I'm just throwing that out there?
Yeah, I mean, it's a destination for sure, but on a limited window, it's not like an everyday destination. It's once a week or sometimes twice.
Great answer. You just switched the way I was gonna rephrase it, okay, there you go.
And some are schools, so, I mean, they kinda are categorized as well.
So on here, we've got some destinations that are things like you need to go to the grocery store, you need to go to school, that kinda thing. And then we've got things like greenway entrances and more recreational. Um, and this, this plan covers both. But as far as with our consultants, they're tasked also with prioritizing and implementation plan. Um, is there any feedback you might have on where you might wanna focus right away? I did hear schools and I heard high density residential, and those are more like almost needs than the recreational side. But I'm just wondering your thoughts on the recreational side.
I think parks is a natural, naturally, and of course, our Burnsville Center Village in the heart of the city.
Okay. Anything else on this, we can move to the next, all right.
For this one, do the walking and biking distances seem appropriate? What we have on here typically what we might think of as a walk shed, for example, that one mile radius. Biking, you know, three miles, uh, someone can typically do fairly easily. We also put on electric assist biking, knowing this is a, a very rapidly emerging trend to have an E-assist bike. And how that really opens up some of these, um, opportunities for people, especially people who might not have ever considered themselves. You know, a biker or, I'm not, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna bike, or maybe I'm older, I'm not, I'm not feeling conditioned to get on my bicycle and bike three miles. I'm curious too if anyone, uh, has an electric assist bike and could perhaps speak to that. But generally, do these, do these distances seem appropriate? And if so, I think there's a lot of opportunity we can talk about in terms of the geography of Burnsville and what might be possible.
I think the distances seem appropriate, but I'm not going anywhere three miles from my house on a bike because I don't feel safe doing so. But in general, I think three miles is fine.
That seems appropriate.
Anyone have an electric assist or know anyone who does? Not yet.
Will there be, um, any assessment done on the actual, actuality of walking one mile versus a radius from a point? Um, because that's not, it's not gonna get you very far here, which is the geography question that you had mentioned. Um, I live in South Minneapolis and I can walk anywhere in a mile. Um, but in Burnsville, um, I've done the running routes here and it's, it takes a long time to get back to City Hall.
Yeah, right, yeah, and it's right, thinking back to that graphic I shared earlier too. You're starting to think about what is the network, there are some low stress networks already, there's trails, there's sidewalks. Even on some of the cul-de-sacs and residential streets, people might feel comfortable walking or biking on those. But you're right, once you get to a larger street, for example, um, then that network might end right there. So I think the idea is, you know, if we were to fill in some of those gaps, you potentially address some of the higher stress low comfort intersections, and then those networks can start to expand. Um, and then thinking, well, now I can walk one mile or I can bike three miles to get from my home to my destination. Now it's, now it might, now it might be possible in the future.
And these are typically ten minute sheds generally, right Colin? Like it's a ten minute, ten minutes to walk a mile.
Right, kinda thinking about walking, you know, that three miles per hour rate. You know, or biking eight to ten miles per hour on average, not racing, but just kind of a standard bicycle speed. And then E-assist, you know, maybe, maybe it's quicker than ten, you know, I think someone mentioned eighteen or twenty miles per hour. Plus just the, the endurance of it, you know, you don't feel as tired or hot on a day like today. Uh, the E-assist can really expand those distances.
All right, hearing nothing else about this, we'll move on to the next.
I think we have two more here, the second to last one. Thinking back to a map that Heather shared, you know, typically multi-lane roadways are considered to be higher stress uh, for people. Are there any two lane roadways in Burnsville that you consider to be high stress for walking and or biking? And if so, what makes them feel stressful? And again, we're saying the word stress, we're thinking about being a person walking or biking along or across these roads.
Not two lane, I would say three lane would be, I believe that's what it was labeled as, County Road eleven can be really stressful. People are not going anywhere near the speed limit when they go down that, that road and that can be very dangerous. I think a lot of the other ones are, are more multi-lane than I can think of offhand.
Um, we can move on then to the last question here.
Here we were just really trying to, you know, sometimes when people come to you with a multimodal plan, it, it instantly peaks a location where you know that there's a need. You know that, oh, if there was only a connection here, I would feel safer, I would feel comfortable. Or there could be an opportunity to provide a facility. So we wanted to give you an opportunity to share, um, any, any locations. And it might not have to be that one to three year low hanging fruit situation, but that you, that you know of off the top of your head or you've heard about from others, that would provide a low stress connection or route. Is there any specific location that any of you would identify that doesn't exist today? That, that you could think of that would make sense for a route, for people walking or biking or, or a trail for both?
And I heard crossing thirteen at Nicklet.
Crossing Highway thirteen anywhere is a dicey proposition. And I would say the same thing for County Road forty-two, if, maybe we're talking about high stress things that should be addressed, but. Well, and I think the challenge there is they may be temporary solutions because, you know, the state is looking at County Road thirteen or, um, State Highway thirteen, the county's looking at County Road forty-two. So I mean, they may be temporary solutions until those more permanent changes are made. You know, I kinda come back to the schools and I don't know if you're familiar with the, what is it, the safe?
Safe routes to school?
Safe routes to school? Safe routes to school?
These guys are very familiar with that.
You piggyback off that and that's your near term one to three years. I mean, quite frankly, let's stop talking about it and start, you know, protecting the kids. That's my low hanging fruit.
We do have a safe routes to school demonstration project happening at Gideon Pond that's kicking off with COVID and the?
That's the second time they've done it.
A safe routes to school.
Gideon Pond has?
They've got a plan. Now they're doing a demonstration project where they're gonna be putting in some bump outs.
Okay, so they're implementing some of the things?
Yeah, on a demonstration level. And I think both Heather and Colin are involved in that design. So that's happening, I think, with implementation of this fall. Is that right? Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually a workshop, I think on Thursday this week. And then I think late summer installation, so it can be in place in the fall.
Yeah, and it was postponed a full year due to COVID because students were in, in school. There's a number of schools that I've reached out to to see if they wanted to start the safe routes to school planning and get a grant. And due to COVID, they just couldn't. This past year was just too hard. So I was, was put on, put on hold. Next, try us again next year, and I will. But that's a great implementation. It's part of our comp plan and we have been reaching out to schools, but they have to also participate. You were a part of the Gideon Pond conversations, I think. We've reached out to some other schools and they just can't right now. But I, I think we could probably note that it's also in the comp plan.
It, it's just one of the frustrating things as a parent, as somebody who's worked in government, as somebody who participates as a volunteer in government, is the ongoing conversations. And you see what can be done expeditiously after a tragedy like on Difley. And then the decade-long conversations of, okay, we'll try this at one school. And, and I mean, I love that we're doing it and I know you probably share some of the same frustrations because it's difficult to get the funding, it's difficult to get the grants. But I think it's also worth noting that, you know, citizens are frustrated too. It's like, let's get some action on this stuff. Let's, you know, we see the, we see the consequences of not getting it done.
And I think to that point, you know, this is another plan. And to your point about action, my goal with this, and I shared this with Heather and Colin when we had our kickoff, is that I have a roadmap that every time we do a construction project, I can tag on something. Maybe it's a trail along the road, maybe it's sidewalk, maybe it's something else. That I have a plan as we're moving forward with our traditional road improvement program. And then as we, you apply for grants and get the, you know, you have a plan in place that just helps you secure that grant funding. So that's the purpose of this plan and I understand the, let's get some things, let's action with some action. And we do too. But without the document, without the sort of roadmap, it's really difficult to get the funding and know what's next and to prioritize. So I hear you and that's the purpose of this.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other, I heard crossing of major roadways and?
I do have a specific location and we do use it. From Judicial Road down into Sunset Pond, if you go through, there's, let me look at the map here. It's right where Highland dead ends it to Judicial Road and then there's some condos or townhouses right there. And then there's a little playground right there. There is a homemade walking path that, cause people use it all the time down the hill to get to Sunset Pond. So it's a nice connector to get up to Sunset Pond or you can go straight into the Savage Park over there as well.
Yeah, that's great. When we see those sort of homemade cow paths beat down. That's when you know that they're used.
Yeah, it's used a lot, a lot.
And that is how that Cliff Road Trail that is gonna be built this summer was people walking along cliff on the north side between thirteen and Egan. That you, they homemade trails, just that's where they're gonna walk, so we should put the infrastructure there. So if you're, if you're think, so that's a great one. If after this, you're thinking about it and you come to, it comes to mind, oh, I, I see one of those, that's a perfect place. And I don't know if you're gonna get to this, oh, this is the thing you said. We're having an interactive map, which is something that was brought up. And so you'll have a link and I encourage you to fill out the survey and tell your friends and neighbors to fill out the survey. And then that map you could mark, I made notes. But if, if you wanted to make note, you can kind of delineate. This is a, an ideal spot. This is where I feel it's unsafe to cross. This is where, and there's a whole bunch of categories. That I think is going live in a few days. Is that right Heather?
Yep, yep, this week it is going live. I wanna say by Wednesday or by Wednesday it should be live, but I need to confirm. But this week it will be live. Yep, the survey and the map. And it'll be, you'll, the website is on the bottom of the slideshow, the www.walkbikeridewill.com. And all of the pieces will be there.
Yeah, the link is in your packet too. And so right now it's just a cover page, but in the next, you know, this week, live, it'll probably be kicked out on social media if you are following that, so.
Please share and show your opinions and share.
Yes, and that's how we'll get the information is that sort of outreach, people will provide us feedback. Cause I, I wouldn't have known about a worn down path without being told. And so we have to, that's how we're collecting our data. Is there any other questions for consultants or for me on this process? Or any things that pop in your mind about the questions we've just asked the eight?
It's like along Burnsville Parkway or Nicklet, heart of the city area, it would seem that would be an ideal place for bike lanes of some sort. And I, I don't know the width, no lanes. I, I think Burnsville Parkway might be tight, but if there's anything we could do there, that would be ideal for both.
Are you thinking on street bike lanes or an off-street trail?
There's an off-street trail, but it's a sidewalk on Burnsville Parkway. On Nicklet, I don't think there is.
And those, those sidewalks are through on Nicklet are, I believe, eight or 10 feet wide. And even though they're concrete, they are sort of designed for that multimodal. But that's a good point because, you know, typically cyclists aren't thinking about riding on concrete, they're thinking of asphalt. And that might be something if we're looking at replacing sidewalks, maybe along Burnsville Parkway on one side we do trail, one side we do a sidewalk. Is that something?
That would, that would be ideal, I think.
Because along those same lines, when you're crossing on Burnsville Parkway over thirty-five W, those sidewalks are really tiny, you know?
On the bridge itself?
Yes, yes. So I think maybe perhaps making a bike path in the street, you know, along the sidewalk itself, because there's no way that you can, you know, two pedestrians can easily pass, much less somebody on a bike and a pedestrian.
So I know we're over an hour. If you would permit me just five minutes, I can give you some regional transportation updates. Twenty twenty-five, that bridge is slated to be replaced and we're working with Minda to widen and pushing them to, to make a wider crossing for pets and bikes. Trunk Highway thirteen, they're having a public hearing at the end of June on the whole environmental study for the whole corridor, which I think you, you were alluding to. There's a bunch of funding that's coming and we're asking the city council if they'd like for us to reach out and try and get secure funding for a Nicklet crossing of thirteen. There's also Chow and Washburn interchanges with that study. And so we're asking the council, if we do wanna reach out for this funding, which one do you prefer us to do? And, and then on County Road forty-two, that study is in process. And time and time again, the crossings of forty-two have been mentioned. In the Burnsville Center Village Plan, there's a planned underpass between Aldrich and Burnhaven, location to be determined based on, on development. And so that's included in the county's plan is having that underpass. So in some location, we just don't know where. So tho- those are things that are on the larger scale of regional level that are in the works, but none of them are happening tomorrow. None of them are happening in the next one to three years. So when you're talking about interim strategies of how to approach some of those crossings, those are good things, thinking inexpensive ways to make it better while we wait for money for the bigger projects.
Perfect.
Sounds good, good start.
Yeah, excellent presentation. Thank you. Thank you both. Yeah, thank you so much. That was great. And thank you for the recap on what's happening at the, at the regional and county level because I think, you know, there's, there's a lot of pieces and there's a lot of funding mechanisms and there's, there, you know, I wanted to have that dialogue about, you know, why do things take so long? Because there's, there's a lot of things that have to happen. So thank you so much for that.
And it's highly competitive. All the money is highly competitive.
Absolutely. Jen, Colin, Heather, thank you all so much. We really appreciate it. And if you, I, I won't have you pull back, pull up your timeline, but if you would promise us, we'll at least get an update as we're going along and kind of know where things are, that'd be awesome.
So I guess from the, from the commission's standpoint, we weren't planning on coming back for another one. The consultants definitely wouldn't be part of their scope. But if you did want me to come back towards the end or at the end and present the final, I can certainly do that. And that would be in October.
I think that'd be great. I mean, ten minutes, what, what's going on, what?
Just a nice recap of where everything is.
Yeah.
Yep, I can do that.
That'd be great.
So the, the council is tentatively scheduled for their timeline to adopt the plan, their second September meeting. Should that happen and we don't get off course, cause I think we're, per the grant allowed through October, it would be October that I could come back, if that fits with the schedule and whatever's on the agenda.
If our gatekeeper allows it. Thank you so much. All right, with that, let's move on to updates. Commissioners, any updates?
So your next planning commission meeting is June fourteenth, so it's three weeks from now, not two weeks. We're going to have, I believe, either two or three public hearings and then we're hoping to have or planning to have council member shows available to talk about council expectations for the city code update. So it's scheduled right now as a discussion, very not guided discussion, but just to talk about for staff and for the commission to have the opportunity to ask how we should be approaching the project. And then we're hoping again for the following meeting, the second planning commission meeting in June to actually be a city code update from our consultant at WSB. That is everything I have.
All right, thank you all so much. Just as a reminder, you can submit any comments, public can submit any comments to the city by Friday this week. That would be great. No public hearings, so you could also wait for some of these things to come out, like the Wiki Maps. I'm excited to start putting stuff on intersections of interest. So with that, let's adjourn. Commissioner Roberts.
Oh, you're right. I moved to adjourn.
I second the motion.
Moved by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Wad. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, and the motion carries. All right, thank you all.